All right, everybody, it's 6:00 PM. Happy New Year. It is the 2nd of January. This is our annual Town of Rhinebeck reorganizational meeting. Would everybody please stand and join us for a question? I pledge allegiance to flag the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okey-dokey. I would like a motion for Resolutions 2024-001 through 2024-034. Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Chauncey. With regard to Tab 23, Resolution 2024-023, appointing our engineering consultant, the rate sheet included here is incorrect. They have sent us an updated rate sheet, which is not a 50% increase over 2023. And I'm in the process of reviewing it with him. And it's pretty much cost of living adjustments. And I think the highest increase is about 20% and an administrative thing. So I'm going back and forth with him, and I'll copy all of it, but it looks good to me.
Good for you for paying attention.
Yeah, that was due diligence.
It really was.
We need a clarification.
That's what I do, because I read this stuff. Any other questions, comments, or concerns about any of the consent agenda items? Having heard none, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The annual reorg meeting consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. I'd like to have a motion to adjourn our reorganizational meeting.
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second? Thanks, Chauncey. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Great, everybody. Thanks. Looking forward to continuing to work with you in 2024.
Yes, me too.
Okay. Now, everybody, welcome to our January 2nd Town of Rhinebeck regular town board meeting. May I have a motion for approval of prior minutes for December 11th, 2023, which was a regular town board meeting?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chad. I forgot your name for a second. Any questions?
It haven't been all of us for a while.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I'd like to announce that, again, the town, we're in need of members for our conservation advisory board, our planning board, our recreation committee. We have a seat open, our board of assessment review, and some of our other committees and stuff. And another reminder that all dogs must be leashed in the town, and especially at the Thompson-Mazarella Park. Okay. Starting with Tab 35, may I have a motion for Resolution 2023-035, the IMA with the village of Rhinebeck for salt brining? Thank you. May I have a second? Thanks, Chauncey. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Bob, thanks very much for working with the village and getting them on the brining program. May I have a motion for 2024-036, purchasing equipment for the maintenance compact tractor and snow blower? Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chad. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. May I have a motion for 2024-037, highway department auction surplus sales equipment?
Motion.
Thanks. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bob, you have a comment?
Yeah. It's a 1991 Ford truck. We took the dump body off of it and put it on another truck. So we recycled the dump body. The chassis is in pretty bad shape at Rupp's, but not, hasn't been serviced for six months, so.
Is it inspectable and registrable, or is it not able to do that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Dump yard.
Oh, and just another quick thing. A tractor that can just okay. There's one on absolute auctions, who we usually use to auction our stuff off. It's got 40 hours on it.
That's not hot.
Put it in a lower in a cab. Right now, the bid's at $15,000.
Wow.
That's for the utility 2025R?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you for.
I mean, we could possibly bid on it if we want.
It's up to you. It's your department.
I think that's a great idea. Everybody has that philosophy.
Maybe get it for two-thirds of the cost of a new one.
Go for it.
And we can have it like that.
Go for it. Great. Thanks for checking it out. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2024-038, preliminary. I can make a motion for 2024-038. May I have a second?
Okay.
I would like to make an amendment to it. Hold on. Page. Page five of the abstract, Rhinebeck Legion Ban from 400 to 300. They mischarged us for a concert they did in Clinton with a Rhinebeck address. So I'm going to amend this to 300, not 400. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I can make a motion for 2023-039. That's Tab 39, our preliminary accounts payable abstracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I'll make a motion for 2023-040, our capital projects abstracts. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Any comments or questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I will make a motion for Tab 41, 2023-041, our budget transfers and amendments. Thanks, Chauncey. Just so you know, when we passed this budget, although we did publish the extended budget, we adopted a budget, if you remember, with fewer line items to allow us to transfer, do less transfers, which will help bookkeeping a lot. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2023-042, transferring a station to cease accepting bulk waste.
Motion.
Thanks, Alan. Chauncey, I'll take you as a second.
Sure.
Any comments or questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
What happens when you pass this? We're going to have mattresses, air conditioners, and washing machines and stuff along the side of the river.
Well, let's say, because we do have a zoning administrator, but we don't have the capacity for this, and they'll have to take it across the river to.
And washing and dryers are on the list.
Yeah. It's mattresses.
Yeah.
And construction debris and things like that, toilets and tubs.
Yeah, the upholstery furniture as well, but it's, they can be redirected to go to Kingston, and we'll take it at a cost that's not any more duress than if we were charging for it, but just the capacity can't be met for those things.
Yeah, it's just that it becomes a problem for me, because I pick the stuff up, and then I've got to take it over there. We don't have an account over there.
Well, let us know. Let's see how it goes. We own the capacity.
Yeah, if that happens, yeah. We'll figure out something and try to make that work.
And it's the tires, too.
Oh, yeah, well.
We haven't been taking tires for a while.
We don't take tires anyway.
No one does.
Where do you find them?
Along the roads. I found four of them up on Old Post Road just a week ago.
Yeah, Kingston doesn't.
They charge us to get rid of them.
Thanks, people.
Actually, the only place that I know of is Midas in Kingston will, at cost, will take the tires that you bring.
Yeah, they ain't cleats. We.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I need a motion for 2023-043 to replace the time clocks for the payroll department. It's time, people.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Chad.
Is that fun?
You know, it was funny, yeah.
Almost funny, too.
And we're upgrading to online. You could do it with your phone and stuff, so. Moving into the millennium. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. I think that's it for this meeting. Any new business before the board? Have a couple of discussion items. You know, we didn't really talk about it during our reorg meeting, but is everybody okay with the liaison list? We can swap and stuff? I wanted to keep my hand in anything having to do with personnel, but Chad's.
I didn't see it yet, but it was at a loss.
It's, you can pull it out. It's on Tab, um, Tab eight.
Thank you.
And this is something we could discuss later if anyone's not happy with it. But I think it's okay. Hopefully, we'll have another person joining us, and we can peel some stuff off. We have a town board to-do list here, and this reflects things that we have budgeted and planned for last, you know, year for this year. It's continue, I'll speed through it. It's our Locust Hill 80-unit workforce housing project, passing our short-term rental law, which we're going to look to have on our next agenda, the last meeting of this month. We are going to look at, we're going to have a presentation on what a community conservation fund looks like, similar to Red Hook, which is enabled to be able to protect hundreds of acres from being developed. And I think since people are worried about development, let's look at what this means. We are going to put forth a mandatory referendum for, to change the supervisor and highway superintendent's term from two years to four years, so that they're in line with everybody else. We'll continue communication with Amtrak regarding the station and track renovations, which has come to a grinding halt as NICE DOT has gotten involved and still hasn't delivered their plan. We will look to enact parking laws in Rhine Cliff that protect the hamlet from overflow parking for the station of non-Rhinebeck residents. Within this plan, we'll see if we can't find several streets where parking for Rhinebeck residents with permits could be allowed during the day. We don't know, but we'll look. We need a policy for the town-owned parking lot in Rhine Cliff. The policy has been that you get a permit, and once you have a permit, you can use it for the rest of your life. And we don't really know who's using it or why, and we need to look at that and decide how it best benefits all of us.
I didn't realize there is such a thing. Is it down at the station, or is it elsewhere?
No, it's right off Rhine Cliff Road, in back of the little pocket park on Shatso, as you turn to go down to Kipstown. It's just on the right.
Oh, sure, yes.
It's a teeny little lot.
I don't know what I thought that was. I didn't realize.
It's our parking lot.
Yeah, now I know.
We also want to design and install the little pocket park there, clean up that pocket park.
Does that fall under the park liaison and all of that area?
Not really. I mean, you know, we, the Rhine Cliff residents had wanted to do it four years ago, and then they didn't do it, and they asked if we could take it over. I mean, we'll work with Bob. I think we need to get it re-leveled out and remove some trees, plant some new trees, put some seating down there, and maybe construct some kind of wall that separates it from the parking lot, fencing or a wall, just.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to be able to be a part of that as well.
Great.
In terms of planning.
Good. Yeah, that'd be great. You know, I think we'll start small and re-grade it and put up a fence and do some plantings and go from there.
Take small steps is probably the best way.
Yeah. I think we have like $10,000 or $20,000 for it, so hoping the highway department.
I think we need to redo the sidewalk.
Sorry?
The sidewalk.
That needs to be redone, too?
On the Shatso Avenue, so.
Is that something you can do?
Well, there's a tree there, and pushing that sidewalk up.
Yeah, I mean, we can go together and look at everything and make a plan.
Okay. The next item, we need to reapply for the third time for a grant to replace the Parsonage Street Bridge. Today, we did get a message from Mayor Bassett to allow me to write a letter in support of their TAB funding. I don't know if you guys saw it, but I'd like to sort of ask you permission to write that letter. It's their safe school route, and within the context of that, we also want to reapply to NICE DOT for the $3 million funding for the bridge, because the village of Rhinebeck can't have a safe school route unless there's a safe pedestrian walkway on the bridge across it. So I'll do that letter, if it's okay with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Bob has been applying for this, and I'm working with him and putting pressure on NICE DOT to give us the money.
Yeah, we've got to have it in by the 26th of this month.
That's soon.
Well, I think basically we can use what we've had left.
Okay, we'll just put this, we'll include the letter to the village, and I will write an additional letter to NICE DOT saying, like, look, we need this money to redo the bridge to help do the safe school route. And, you know, I've already been in touch with Michelle Hinshi and Sarah Hana, and I can go to NICE DOT, too, so.
Okay. Great.
Alan's going to inspect and come up with a sort of recommendation of how we can improve our four townhome solar arrays.
Yeah, one of the arrays is almost 20 years old.
I can't believe that.
2005.
Which one?
At the pool.
Huh.
The other ones are 12 years old.
Yeah, they were done together. They were done at the same time.
No, the pool was first.
And then everything else was later.
The other three were done.
2007, '08, '09, '10?
I think '11.
'11 is what.
And there's three different companies, and I'm starting through it with. Actually, I've been waiting to talk to Gary, because he's an expert in this area. We need to get him inspected, basically.
Great.
Yeah, and they've got to be washed every two years.
I think we're a little behind on that schedule.
Well, the highway department, we wash it every two years.
Oh, okay.
So we want to also restore our.
So they've been maintained, yeah.
We also want to restore our historic cemetery receiving vault. That's a project that Suzanne Kelly has on our list. We'll have to see what that entails in terms of masonry work and/or engineering. And we're in the, we've started implementing our cemetery signage project with, I think, sort of beautiful new signs that are done by a company, a family-owned company in Hyde Park.
We saw some of them on the meeting.
Yes, we did.
The council.
Yep. We need to get with all the planning to revive the project for the biking and walking trail connecting Amtrak to the village. We need volunteers to help us with that, please. This is a, would be a safe walking and biking route from Amtrak to the village. Our skate park is stalled because our vendor told us that he neither wants to do site plan restoration nor implement our SWIP. So Chauncey and Brian Tam and other people from the REC committee are working to find a new vendor. Let's come to a screeching halt. We can't do a project with a vendor and not have them do site restoration or install the SWIP, which is really easy. It's basically conduits and gravel, and they don't want to do it, so it doesn't make sense for us. That's holding up the plan, finding a new vendor. Finally, just got me a word that they don't want to do it, so. Thanks for, thanks for pickleballing the skate park.
Oh, we're going to a new verb.
Pickleball.
A natural verb.
That's it. We're going to restore and rebuild our kiddie pool. If you go down there, the foundation's crumbling. It's also sort of tied into that building there, but that'll be done. We've been being asked recently for benches and trees to be planted at the park, and this is something the town board has to decide if we want to do or not. Do we want to start allowing people to do donation-placked benches and trees at the park? And if so, under what guidelines? Is it open to everyone? Is it open to people who've served the town? We've got to look at it, because it's getting willy-nilly, or it will be willy-nilly. We'll just have benches plunked down with. We need a plan, and we need to decide if this is something we want to do.
Yeah.
So we'll kick it to the REC committee.
Well, there's, and there's, I mean, the Red Hook Rec Park has its own history of dealing with it, and they may have some things to share about what they've learned. Bard College has the same process, not the same process, but a similar process. And I can certainly liaison with them to get just a ground, a ground rule of how things work and how it best handles it.
Yeah. We've sort of put a hold on it. We're like, we don't have a policy for this, and we need a policy before we just keep going.
Yeah.
Going to have to create a seating area for the pickleball and tennis, mostly pickleball. Pickleball has a different culture. Chauncey's explained to me. I'm learning so much about it. Now with my new knees, I can play.
More than you ever wanted to know.
But people turn up.
You will?
I said I might. I am able to. I'll consider it.
All right. I look forward to it.
People sort of rotate in and out, so they need a space to sit while they're waiting. The games are quick. But we have this nice sort of area, the forecourt, and, you know, we want to create a shaded.
And since the average age is high, considerably lower than mine, but a place where people can get out of the heat.
Yeah, the sun. We need to make improvements to the pollinator garden. It's hugely successful, but I would like to get some labor in there to do some weeding and removal and better sort of.
That's in between the tennis court and the pickleball court.
Yes. And maybe plant some additional species, you know, for year-round.
Was that originated by community volunteer, or was that implemented by the town?
The town.
So it's maintained by the town?
Or not. It's a naturalized garden.
It's a naturalized.
So it needs, yeah, it needs to be cleaned up and defined, and I think we need a couple of new indigenous species introduced.
Okay.
Yeah. We have, in our reorg meeting, combined our REC department and our park department and our recreation advisory department. In 2016, we passed a new local law defining our recreational advisory committee, and it's a committee of seven staggered seats that advise us on all things having to do with recreational programs and the physical plants of, you know, the park. So we had that committee, and then we had a park committee. The park committee was, had a lot of attrition, and we and the chairs of those two committees thought that it would be in the best interest of the town to combine the two committees. So we basically moved all of the active members from the Thompson-Mazarella Park Committee to the recreational advisory committee. We still have one open seat, but we have to come up with a charge for this committee. One of them, as I'd like them to, you know, look at, do we want to have usage policy for, you know, for donated things? The other is, is it time for us to look at the master plan for the park? And, you know, are we putting in two baseball fields? Do we need two baseball fields? If we put a baseball field in, is it going to be artificial turf? If it's not artificial turf, how is extreme climate change going to affect it? If we do put in a new baseball field, what are we doing with the park facilities at Stone Church? Who's using them, and do we need them? You know, just, let's look at what the usage is. Also.
I mean, the master plan was '07 or '10?
I think '10.
So it's been a while.
It's been a while. It has a, you know, we've amended it to allow the pickleball courts, and I think the skate park was there. We haven't put in the second phase of parking, but let's look at it, and then let's look at what we're doing with Stone Church.
Yeah. I agree.
Let me ask a question that came up the other day. I was there with somebody, and we looked at the baseball field, and he observed, you know, this isn't big enough for high school players. Do we have a policy that, for example, players can't be older than middle schoolers or something? Because I think he's right.
Well, the scale, the scale of the field is a Little League field. It's like.
It's not a baseball field, it's Little League.
It's a Little League baseball field, and the high school has its facility and.
Well, that's right. The high school has a baseball field.
The high school has its facility, and Stone Church has two very well-maintained baseball scales as well.
They're full-size?
They're full-size. They're adult size. So there's two of them over, I think, two.
And one, I think one only gets used.
And to be discussed, but in terms of the necessity, that Little League field is used annually and regularly when it's act, when it's the season. So, yeah, that's, but it is Little League baseball. It's part of the Red of Rhinebeck.
But the field that's in our, there are two fields on our master park plan, just to the, just to the east of the soccer field, the multi-physical turf soccer field. If we put one in and it's full-size, you know, et cetera, so to be looked at. And then what are we doing with Stone Church? Do we still need, need it? What's the need?
There's a lot to review.
Thank you.
There's a lot.
When Gary retired as caretaker for the cemetery, he vacated the house, which is the old chapel that was turned into a house. You guys can go down there and look at it. We've batted around the idea of restoring it to a chapel, non-denominational meeting room for burials or gatherings, and we need a plan. You know, it's just a very simple structure, but there could be a bathroom, a kitchen in back, and then an open meeting room for people to gather. So we need to sort of come up with a plan for that, and that's something that the friends of the cemetery have talked about wanting to fund. Town hall roof needs to be replaced. Josh and Alan, I think, had identified that there are big leaks up there. All the PV solar voltage arrays have to come down, and it has to be redone. Apropos of that, I let the board elections know that because we're doing that and replacing the town hall roof, and we need to create an office space here, at least for recreation, and look at a plan for possibly converting this into office space and the back of the courts, where courts is into office space. We're, we're, we've grown out of town hall. So we will not be having early voting in Rhinebeck for the foreseeable future until these projects are done.
At least not here. It might be elsewhere, at least.
Oh, yeah, they're looking for another facility in the area. I think Robert McCann has offered Red Hook.
Well, and we've used the Star Library.
It's not up to us. It's up to the.
Yeah, no, of course, I understand.
There is 3,000 voters for the 10 days of early voting, and I don't think that Star can handle the, I talked to the director. Yeah, it's a lot of people. So these are major things that need to be done in town hall. We have to get people out of basements. Also, our front garden, you know, sort of redefining that and modernizing that a little bit. Our rural and scenic road inventory project that the former Comprehensive Review Group came up with. Finish CAPI, our greenhouse emissions benchmarking, which should be done by the end of February. And then we have to decide what else we want to do with Aaron. Do we want to start going for our silver certification? Or do we want to break? I mean, my gosh, that almost killed us, but we got bronze, I'm very proud of it. Assessing the feasibility for the Silver Climate Smart Community Designation. Consolidating our court or sharing court space with another municipality. Our controller put out a study last year or the year before that basically every single court in the county is running at a deficit, except for, I think, Stanford and Mylan because of their whopping fines that they get for the speeding on the Taconic. So we're running at about a $40,000 to $50,000 a year deficit, and the village is running at a larger deficit than that. We have the same judge here as we do across the street. We need that space. So we have passed a resolution only allowing court to happen after 6:00 PM because we use this space during the day. We need to look at either sharing space with another municipality or consolidating because it's the gap in, we, of course, it's a service that we need to supply, but we're losing $50,000 a year. We're spending $50,000 a year to maintain this court when there's the same court right across the street. It's, people talk about shared services. We need to go back and look at this. And if the village doesn't want to do it, we need to look at neighboring towns. We have to abut the other towns in order to consolidate. Environment, and then, you know, whatever other environmental or sustainability projects we want to do. I've published the list of lawsuits against the town because we get a million questions. So, and I think this is something we want on our website, and we want to update. So they're here. We have a slip and fall in the village, and whenever anyone slips and falls, they automatically sue us. We are being sued by Harold and Mildred Mendelson, former owners of a house on Primrose Hill. They, this is public information, so it's what people should know. We are being sued by the Patel's. They own land on 9G, just off Nine, Garden Homes. And they want a zoning amendment. Instead of going through our process, they want to sue us for it. So that's, they lost a lawsuit, and Warren has gone down to the appellate courts, and we'll see what the appellate courts say. Joe Uli and Brian Benning are suing us, I think it's in Article 78, for the subdivision Alderkill. They lost their recent suit with the fire oversight, state oversight. The driveway as planned for the subdivision stands. It is legal, it's fine, it's proper. Marsha Kaplan is administrator for the estate. It's Jeff Lee Kaplan is suing the town for a death. Tree hit Mr. Kaplan as he was jogging during a storm. It's not on town property, it's not within the right of way of what we care for. Linda and Richard Murray are suing us for paving Wurtenberg Road. GLC Drive Associates, Gigi is suing us. They lost their lawsuit. All tenant counts were dropped, and they're appealing it. This had to do with their noncompliance of the state and county emergency laws during COVID. And then Red Wing Properties is suing the town. And we're in a tolling agreement with them, which just means that we've agreed to extend the amount of time needed to go to court. So I think that's it. Chad, you had sent some additions to the to-do list, which I didn't put on because it was late, and also, we didn't really budget for any of it, but do you want to review? And a lot of these aren't within our purview, but I'm happy to go over them.
Well, as, as we spoke about them, some of them are really focusing within the Rhineback, uh, Rhine Cliff community and some of aspects of that which do extend to the Rhineback township as well. But a lot of it falls under Bob's purview.
Let me just go over it, yeah. Repainting yellow curbs, no parking in areas in Rhine Cliff. I feel strongly that this is not within our purview, and it's Bob's decision as to whether or not, you know, and you got to also realize that some people get pissed when you paint a rural road yellow, so...
I, I...
There's always a group who's not happy.
I've heard both sides.
Yeah. Repainting the crosswalk at the intersection of Brunel's Street and Shatso. Repainting the Rhine Cliff municipal parking lot spaces and the handicap parking lot spaces. That's in our park, that is scheduled to be done. You have a painting machine now, right?
We have a brand-new strip.
Yay, so Bob will definitely be striping our municipal lot. I think the crosswalks and the note, that's your, you decide, right?
Well, the crosswalks, you know, once you do them, you got to keep doing them.
So you will do them this year?
I'll, I'll put them in, yeah.
Wait, you do want to put them in?
Well, I think we should have them in at Shatso and Charles Street.
Which are town roads.
Right.
Okay, good, thank you. Lowering speed limit in the hand of Rhine Cliff, we cannot do that. That's the state, we've tried that four times already, right?
What's that?
Lowering the speed limits. It's not, state generally is...
You got to have a population of over 50,000 people.
Hold on, excuse me, excuse me. Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not within our purview. We don't have the population where town in the second class. We cannot change speed limits on town hall floors.
Well, I'm gonna, I will pursue it at my own peril.
Go for it. Proposed crosswalks for certain areas in Rhine Cliff, work with the highway superintendent.
Thank you, I will.
The second, last thing, proposing a town of Rhinebeck commuter parking lot. First of all, standalone parking lots aren't allowed within the town. Thirdly, I, I don't think it's a good idea that we own and run a parking lot, but you do what you, you know, you got a voice here, so go for it.
I will pursue it at my own peril.
And what is this, you want a town-owned parking lot for overflow parking in, for Amtrak?
I will prepare a presentation when, when I'm really clear on how to do it.
Okey-dokey. Anybody else have any comments, questions, or concerns? Any other projects we've forgotten? I mean, things come up during the year, and we react to emergencies, and, you know, who knows what? But it's a lot to do.
2024, here in town.
We will have the noise ordinance at our next meeting, and I believe a short-term rental either then or in February.
Do we have, are to be voted?
Well, we have to vote on it. We have to have a public hearing, and we have to listen to the public. We may have to make amendments. The short-term rental law that we're looking at, that we sort of put to sleep during COVID was only allowing one's primary residence to be rented out and while one is on the property. But if you have an accessory dwelling or a granny flat or an in-law suite, as long as you're there, you can rent it out. It's to curb, you know, it's right in keeping with Red Hook and Rhinebeck Village that residential properties are non-commercial, unregulated hotels. We'll hear what the public has to say. I know a lot of people who are dependent on this income. It's currently not legal in the town, so this will be controversial. We do have about 85 short-term rentals on a consistent basis in the town of Rhinebeck with complaints of people who live next door to, you know, we have all the doors of folks coming in and out.
So the next round will be a public hearing?
No, we'll lay down a local law.
Okay.
And set a public hearing. I don't know about anything else?
Squeegees.
That's crazy, squeegees and brooms.
I, I, I will, since you've asked a couple of times, we ought to do something, maybe by, I don't know, do we issue proclamations? Something in recognition of Ed Roberts' years of service.
We have a gift for Ed, and we could invite him to a meeting and present it to him. He was ill for the last couple of meetings. We did have something planned. Ed served us graciously, a very positive, kind, supportive, loving man for eight years, two terms. And he wants some time off now, which I think is egregious and outrageous, but...
Letting us know, guys. And he did a lot of work.
He did a lot of work, and he, he worked as a liaison to departments with a lot of complaints, and there were a lot of crazy things that we went through, like the do-it-yourself burial and stuff like that. But we do have a thank you, and thanks for reminding us. Let's see if we can't get him to our next meeting or...
Can we give him a call?
I did see him out at Christmas Eve. He was out with his family, and I was out with my family, and I mentioned that we wanted him to...
Did he seem agreeable today?
Yeah, he did.
Oh, good.
But, yeah, call him.
Good, oh, all right, I will.
See if we can't get him, and that's sweet of you to remember. Any questions, comments, or concerns from anyone in the, Eleanor?
Good evening, Eleanor.
Any consolation? One day I was walking home from Upstate Fomes, and there was a four-inch lift in the sidewalk, and the light went out, and I crashed, and I chipped a tooth, and I didn't sue the town, and I didn't sue the village.
Wow, Eleanor.
Everybody sues.
That's the village, it's not us, but strangely enough, whenever anyone slips in the village, they automatically sue us, too.
Not everybody, I'm just saying.
Thanks, Eleanor.
You have an exemplary example.
Just ask the village to cut you a check for your chipped tooth.
I know, I was, yeah, I did once, but anyway, they, yeah, they were... But anyway, I just was curious, whatever came with that letter that we discussed possibly with the fair?
You know, I haven't done anything further about it, and I'm going to tell you why. I talked to the mayor, and I talked to Andy Imparati, and the guy that they hired was a short, was, the original artist canceled on them, so they had to scramble and find somebody. And the actions that he did happened after they hired him, and upon further reflection from me, I don't want to butt into the Fairgrounds business. I know where I stand and what I support, and anyone that the town hires or engages will not be representing the Confederate South, the glory of the Confederate South, or anti-LGBTQ. But I figured, and I haven't discussed this with the board...
Is that Mr. Mrowe in the future would, you know, to be a more...
I think it's up to you and concerned citizens to...
Yeah, I know. I've already expressed my views to him, but I'm just curious if, if he, you know, if he felt that in the future he...
You know, I don't know, and part of what we do here is stay in our own lane. So when we start, you know, I, of course, was sympathetic with it, and, and then upon further reflection, I just thought, we need to stay in our own lane and let Andy run and the Board of Directors run the Fairground, and if people are upset with what they're doing, you need to go to them. We have a relationship with them, and...
Well, I respectfully disagree, but we'll just...
I hear you, thank you.
Thank you.
That would mean that we're, anytime, any private entity is doing something that we don't like, we're getting involved, and that's not something...
But it's, I, I just...
Yes.
Like I expressed before, I mean, yeah, that's true, if it's a private entity, but this is the county fair, so, you know, this is...
It's not, that's the name of it.
I know, but they, yes, but they, somehow they've been given that, right? Right, so that's kind of a little bit more responsibility.
They're not funded by tax dollars, they have a Board of Directors, they're 501(c)(3).
Yeah, we underwrite them because they don't pay taxes.
They're exempt per state law.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's above our pay grade, so...
No, I get that, I'm just saying that, so they're not quite...
And only a sliver of it is in the town, like, you know...
Well, I've gone to the village, I mean, I go, I went to the village.
I hear you, I'm sympathetic, I agree, I think it's an overstep for us, but I don't know how you guys feel.
Bob had a question or something.
Bob?
Yes. People interested in joining these committees, where would they find the application?
It's online, and you can call the clerks.
It's online?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very simple, five-minute job to fill it out.
I will update the public. We are meeting two prospective potential candidates to fill the empty seat for the town board. We've agreed that we won't appoint unless it's a unanimous decision. We won't go. If someone is against, we won't do it, majority wins, we all, we all have to agree.
Yes.
So tomorrow, Chad and I are meeting with two people, and then Chauncey and Alan have elected to meet with the two people individually. Okay, have we thoroughly, this long meeting, have we thoroughly exhausted ourselves? Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you all for coming. Thank you, gentlemen, I'm looking forward to feeling energized and excited about this year and...
You look well-rested. It's been a while.
You know, I, that cold finally, you know, finally got over, the, the end-of-year virus I always get. So thank you, everybody, thanks for coming. Bob?
We have to have a motion to adjourn.
I, I went to a seminar down in Millbrook, it's called the Greenway, a couple of years ago, and I got a book, if you want to look at it, it had rain gardens and having...
Oh, great. Well, that could be applicable to several things we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I have it at my office.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Eleanor.
Well, we'll make it time to get together and start.
All right, everybody, again, thank you, looking forward to 2024. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody, good evening, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.